Welcome, everybody. It is five o'clock on Monday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I am calling the regular Wausau District Board meeting to order. Ms. Peck, please call and roll.
Sarah Brock, John Creacher.
Here.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli.
Joanna Reyes.
Here.
Jane Roche.
Here.
Cory Sillers.
Here.
Lance Trollop.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here.
Please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And this evening, we have Thomas Jefferson Principal Matt Schilling, ready to share some information about the elementary school. Welcome.
All right, well, good evening, Board of Education. Again, my name is Matthew Schilling, and I am the principal at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. So there are lots of great things happening at Thomas Jefferson. But tonight, I'm just going to highlight one of those things for your time's sake. So the thing that I want to share with you guys is our student-led conferences that we've been doing for the last couple of years. So Cassie, get to the next slide. So what are student-led conferences? So they're basically like a typical conference where parents and teachers get together to discuss the progress of their student. However, with the student-led ones, we have our students come to those conferences, and they take more of a lead during those conferences. So during this time, they share their learning progress, or where they started to where they are now. They talk about things that they achieved, things that they're proud of, and also they show their parents and tell their parents some of their future goals that they're going to work on before the end of the current school year. So to help students facilitate this conversation, they use what we call a student portfolio. And at our school, K through fifth grade, we have that done digitally. So if you look on the screen, this is our template that we give to students for each school year. And on the front cover, they're able to put their name on it and their picture. And then throughout the portfolio, you'll see the five sections that they put what we call an element into it. So there's a myself, my WIGs. And WIGs, again, stands for wildly important goals, the my learning part, my leadership, and my celebrations. So in a second, you're going to see some student-led conferences from last week, because that's when we had our conferences. You'll see Harper in third grade, Avery in fifth grade, and Kyler in first grade to give you a taste of what those look like and what those sounds like. So next, probably be a couple of videos. Cassie, if you could just go up to the video and slide the little bar back to the beginning for me. Appreciate it.
My leadership portfolio. This is me. So we're going to start in myself. In the beginning of the year, we each made a poster that described ourselves. I picked the word funny for myself. I like laughing and telling jokes and making people smile.
If you picked another word for the middle of the year, would you pick the same word or would you pick a different one?
I would probably pick that, the word balanced.
Ooh, I like that word. Why would you pick that one?
Because I always get that word, and I still have like room for the fun as well.
That would be an excellent word to add if we maybe do this again. I like that word choice. All right.
And here's my wig. This is my wig. It helps me get ready for fourth grade. I picked the wig. I will practice multiplication and division facts with this chart four times a week. And we do kind of like a half sheet of fifty multiplication problems, and we throw it out and put it over there.
And then I make a huge stack of them, and say somebody else checks them.
And here's how I did it. I got it two weeks. And I did, I missed it on the, two weeks ago, but I made it the next week.
Yeah. Did you do any adjustments to your wig? Like when you missed it that one week? What did you do differently than next week to make sure that you were going to be your goal?
I did the same thing, and then I started asking Dad to print something home.
Awesome. What a good way to solve that. So then you were, and those are the sheets that you've been bringing to me too, right? Those are the practice things that you have at home. I have a whole bunch of them. So if you want to keep printing them, go ahead. But also, I could give you a little stack of them if you wanted. It would just happen.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd just be handy, right? Yeah. What happens if we need you each week?
So we have a choice of either getting five dojo points. Dojo is where like we get a bunch of points, and at the end of the year, all of those points will turn into carnival tickets. There's, it's five points at carnival ticket. So far, I have six.
Six tickets already? You have that many dojo points?
Thirty-one.
And then the next one will be our fifth grader talking about the next two sections of the portfolio.
I was proud of the ninety-five, ninety percent of math test that I did. And even though I didn't get it all the way, I was still proud of how I did my best and got still a pretty good score. For EOL, I got a, I mean, I got one hundred percent for less than five, less than twenty-five in the read. And I'm really proud of that, even though it was late. I'm still proud that I got one hundred percent and did my best. My leadership, I got a leader in me award. I think it was leadership award. And so I'm just really proud that I got that and was recognized for that. And I am a good leader and help others. Myself.
And then our last one would be Kyler in first grade.
Want me to talk about your leadership? How you got these? What did you, what do you have right there?
Possum.
Yeah, possum award, right? And you have two of them, right? How did you get those? What happened?
Being good.
Yeah, what are some things, like being good? What are some of our goals?
Helping people.
Yeah, helping people, right? Being respectful, being safe, and be responsible. And look, you have two of them. So it means twice you were being respectful, responsible, and safe, right? Now let's look.
So again, that just gives you a quick glimpse of what those student-led conferences look and sound like across the grade level. So I believe that was my last slide. Again, just a couple of thank yous and shout outs to our student leaders and our staff that were willing to record some of the conferences that we had last week. Are there any questions when it comes to student-led conferences?
Any comments? Go ahead.
Yes, every student does one kindergarten through second grade. I mean, obviously, if the child doesn't come, they do have their iPad at school, and the teacher would use that. And depending on the time of the year, like obviously in the fall, they might not have an element or an artifact in each section. So then the teacher takes on a little bit more of that facilitating when it comes to the conversation. So, but yeah, K through second, or fifth grade.
Any other comments? We're greatly appreciated in being able to see how the conferences are going. I think that's a great way of running it. And thank you for bringing it.
Yeah, no, thank you, guys. Thanks.
You bet. Agenda item number six. And no one is here to speak to us, okay? We'll continue on. Agenda item number seven, consent agenda. Appointments, additional staff replacement, staff contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence, retirements, minutes from the regular session of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, special session of February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, and special session of February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Payment of bills, budget status, and investment report, CISA nine shared services contract, and donations to the district. And they are quite a few. Boxes of clothes from Liz Paul to Grant Elementary, two hundred dollars from QuickTrip to Lincoln Elementary, five fifty-three, five hundred and fifty-three dollars from American Online Giving Foundation, two hundred and fifty dollars from Shire Tire and Auto to Wausau Area Montessori Charter School, two thousand dollars from Blue Jacks Hockey, three thousand dollars from Chatterbox Charities, thousand and fifty dollars from Megan Harding, five hundred dollars from Barbara Johnson, and three hundred and thirty-seven dollars from Wausau East Junior Jacks Youth Wrestling Incorporated to the Wausau East High School. And a hundred dollars from Bartels and Pease LTD, two hundred dollars from Brickner Motors Incorporated, six hundred and fifty dollars from Scott and Amy Katonic, two hundred dollars from Contract Carpets of Wausau Incorporated, a thousand dollars from the Law Office of Mary Sue Anderson, three hundred dollars from Weld Riley, a thousand dollars from Schuetti Incorporated, and a hundred and fifteen dollars from Wausau Elks Lodge Two Forty-Eight to Wausau West High School. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for donations to the district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight. Mr. Williams gave a brief update on the district consolidation project, and you have some more information for us. Okay. We appreciate that.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring this update to you. Cassie, you want to? So there's been a lot of things going on since the last time that we've met. We've been able to communicate the principal assignments to the staff and the families so people know who the principals will be and who will be greeting them at the door that first day of class, the fall. We've also completed over a hundred assignments for impacted staff. It's quite a few people to try to do, and we're working through the list, and we continue to do so with the hope that we'll have that finished very shortly. We've also contracted with our library vendor. They're doing an analysis right now of libraries that are impacted. There's going to be over thirty thousand items in the collections of the different schools that have to be catalogued and moved and determine what will be moved to which library. We are also starting to include the impacted principals in our planning meetings. So it's a group effort to make sure that we're looking at the culture of the different buildings, learning from what Ashgosh told us being one of the main things to look at, and moving forward to make sure everybody's on the same page. We've also started to review and make some changes to structures and software, like Infinite Campus. We were able to do some of that preliminary work in preparation for the summer. Others, we're not as able to do that. But we are taking a look at those and making the plans so that we're ready when the school year ends. So for the next turns, we're going to complete the communication to, of assignments to the remaining impacted employees. Once that's done, we'll also be updating the mappings of the buildings. We need to know who's going where and what are the finalized those mappings to know how the room assignments are going to be. Then we're also continuing on with the confirming the district assets. Things like, from a technology standpoint, BenQ boards. With the construction at secondary, there's a need of some BenQ boards. And instead of purchasing new ones, we will take the opportunity to review what we have in the schools that are closing and reassign those to make sure that we are appropriately using our funds. It also looks at all the curriculum as well so that we can go through and see what curriculum needs to be transferred as well. We're in the process of planning for welcoming to staff at their new locations so they can get accustomed early. We don't want people that just show up in August and wondering where they are. We want them to feel comfortable in their new spaces. So we're working on how we can do that. We're in the process of selecting a moving company so that we can get the plans together with that moving company and then communicate out to the staff what they'll need to do to meet those needs. And then we're also working with 4K to review their needs and what they might have at Lincoln. And four, on the horizon. So there's still a lot of work to do even after these parts are completed. We have to introduce the students and their families to the new schools, and that'll be planned through the spring. And then we also want to make sure that we honor the closing schools. This is a big deal for not only the students who are currently there, but alumni and the communities as well. So we want to make sure that we honor those closing schools and have plans in place. And then, obviously, the move itself and the library transition is part of that move. And at the end, we'll also be building those transportation plans so parents and children know where they're going and how they're going to get there. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? If not, thank you for giving us the update and continuing to keep and give us updates. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agenda eight B, estimated, this is the five-year fiscal forecast. The board will be presented with a five-year fiscal forecast model for the district. The projection model will continue to be applied during the next three months to aid in constructing the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six budget reconciliation plan and ultimately, the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six budget. It is critical to understand that the projections are the result of many variables that independently change periodically. As significant changes to the projections occur, administration will continue to update the board. So with that, do we have Josh here this evening? Or are you going to give us our?
No new information to present to the board.
No more information, no new information. Okay, we'll continue on to nine. Agenda item nine. Michelle, Director of Elementary Education, and Ms. Rukowski, 4K Principal at Early Childhood Coordinator, will present information pertaining to the 4K program and move to have the Hawthorne Hills 4K students attend 4K at the Lincoln Early Learning Center. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. We are here tonight to provide a brief overview of the 4K site structure for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We will highlight our current 4K structure, review the structure that was in place based on the task force recommendations, and outline a new proposed structure for 4K as we move forward into the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. At the heart of all of this work is our goal of four-year-old kindergarten programming, which is to provide young learners a foundation for lifelong learning by fostering their social, emotional, and cognitive and physical development through intentional play-based and structured learning experiences. Our current structure of 4K consists of nine classroom environments, which is eighteen sections because we run AM and PM sections across four locations known as our 4K academies. So Thomas Jefferson, Hawthorne Hills, GD Jones, and Riverview. Following the task force recommendation, our initial plan for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year was for all 4K students on the east side of the river to attend 4K at Riverview. All students on the west side of the river would attend 4K at the Lincoln Early Learning Academy. In this plan, children that would have attended Hawthorne Hills 4K Academy would have attended Riverview Early Learning Academy. Just a couple of points. Unlike K-12 attendance boundaries that exist, 4K attendance is based on location, the location that a child is during the day and not necessarily at the home address. Families also of 4K students can choose to enroll at any site if they're willing to transport their child to that location. So within the initial structure, there were, within this structure, there were nine classroom environments, or eighteen sections, that would be located across two early learning academies. So twelve sections or classroom facilities at Lincoln, and six sections or three classrooms at Riverview. The updated 4K plan that we bring tonight for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year would shift students from the three closing academies to the Lincoln Early Learning Academy. So students from Hawthorne, Jones, and Jefferson would attend 4K at Lincoln. There would be, continued to be that option for children to attend 4K at Riverview if families chose or choose to transport their child to that location. And then here is the overview and breakdown of sections with this structure. There continues to be nine classroom environments in eighteen sections, distributed with fourteen sections or seven classrooms at Lincoln, and four sections or two classrooms at Riverview. Key considerations that went into this new structure include that consistency and the consideration of space needs across 4K through five at Riverview. So this shift allows for optimized space for the entire Riverview community and building, 4K through five. It attempts to avoid placing staff in alternate spaces for instructional purposes in the building as we were working to map and capture K-five space. One example, just practically, is we currently have a program for three- and four-year-olds who are deaf and hard of hearing or have hearing impairments occurring outside of, with our 4K and Early Childhood Academy location at Riverview. And this shift would allow that classroom to move into that 4K and early childhood space of the building. Some possible outcomes from this shift would be that a large number of children would enter kindergarten as a cohesive group, having had shared one year, a one-year 4K experience before joining their elementary schools. So just to explain this a little bit further, currently, our students who are at Riverview who attend are from the same area that would continue to attend at Riverview. And eighty percent of those children remain at Riverview for kindergarten, which is much different than all of our other 4K learning academies, where forty-three to forty-eight percent move to a different building for kindergarten. So having children from outside the Riverview attend Zone Ten Lincoln would optimize us, give us the opportunity to specialize the transition into kindergarten after just that one-year program model. Also, this shift allows the current team at Hawthorne to remain intact and move together instead of being split between Hawthorne and Lincoln, which is important because we know keeping teams together as we navigate this shift will provide stability with professional learning opportunities, professional relationships, shared best practices, and seamless learning experiences for students. There are also possible transportation efficiencies. More specifically, we would anticipate needing to transport students from the east side of town to Lincoln for specialized programming, such as our multilingual programming. So moving students that would attend Hawthorne, the Hawthorne 4K Academy to Lincoln will reduce having multiple routes going to two separate locations on the east side from the same neighborhood. We very much see this as a long-term solution for our 4K program. As with this option in place, we would be able to adapt and adjust programming in the future with little impact on staff, students, or families. This organizational shift of having students from the current Hawthorne, Jefferson, and Jones 4K academies attend Lincoln Early Learning Academy is a strategic and beneficial solution for our district.
Any questions from board members about the presentation? Well thought of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item nine B one, AGR Annual Report. February Education Operations Meeting. Michelle directed, Director of Elementary Education, presented the first of two annual AGR update reports to the school. Anything you want to add to it? No? We've heard it, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, continuing on, Agenda item nine B two. At the February Education Operations Committee meeting, Mr. Romansky, Director of Buildings and Grounds, reviewed notable projection, projects recently completed as well as the effect of alternate funding sources to provide context for the upcoming planned capital improvements. Projects planned for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six are provided on the final page. Anything to add?
No.
No, okay, thank you very much. I'm seeking a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six capital projects and the corresponding budget.
So moved.
You have a second? Okay, you have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda item nine B three. With recent federal changes, administration brought Title IX related policies before the committee to review proposed changes. Policy twenty-two sixty-four needs to be rescinded, and the policy twenty-two sixty-six needs to revert back to the status prior to the changes we implemented in summer two thousand and twenty-four. That information was given to us earlier, and so I'm going to seek a motion to approve the recommended changes to the attached Title IX policies.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. Continuing on. I'm asking the board to share any professional growth and development for the month. Anyone want to add to anything that has happened in the last month that you'd like to bring forward?
Just want to commend the administration on a phenomenal community conversation. I was there for all twelve-ish hours, and it was an incredible experience. So, thanks, guys.
Well identified. Thank you for putting that on. Any other questions or comments?
I attended the WASB's law conference seminar and learned some good things about expulsion and our own attorney, well, not our attorney. The attorney that we used, Tess, spoke to us about, I don't know if I can remember the name of it. The functional behavior analysis and how important that is. She said that's even more important than the IEP, and I just think that's a good message to hear.
Thank you. Thank you for attending. Appreciate it. And thank you for attending. The board members that attended the committees that were put on for three full days, it was very long. And I hate to say I only made one, but I think, Sarah, you made all three. So thank you very much for being there. Appreciate that. Legislative liaison, Mr. Sillers.
Well, you and I are heading to Madison on Wednesday for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Lobby Day at the Capitol. So we'll see where things sit, what the members' opinions are of what the budget may look like. See what horse trading is to be done, I guess.
It'll be fascinating. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah. And with CISA nine meeting last Wednesday, Al Betri shared, I was unaware, Pat Snyder, Representative Snyder, has a new assignment, and he is part of the Assembly Education Committee now. So we'll see if that helps us out in any fashion, so.
Well, we can, we're so close to him. We can probably just tap him on the shoulder next time we want to talk to him about anything that we would see as being very important to move forward. So that was good news to hear that, that Snyder was put into that position. So it'll be good for him. Thank you, Mr. Snyder, Congressman Snyder. Next item, Mr. Bushman. Any comments?
Yeah, I'll just add quickly to the community conversation to give a quick update. More data will be coming before the board so you can kind of see the end results of discussion. We had a hundred and eighty-five or so people sign up to show for the, for the three-day event. We had a hundred and thirty who were there. It seems like a lot to lose between signup and actual event, but it was a better attrition rate than what our facilitator typically sees. He says typically it's thirty percent that drop. The other thing that was kind of a neat thing for our community is we grew in numbers from day one to day two. So people showed up, people stayed. It was a really good event for us. There's a lot of positive feedback anecdotally from people and a lot of good information that I'm excited to put into play and into practice to make our district stronger. And again, you guys will be And again, you guys will be seeing some of that information coming up in the near future.
We look forward to it. There's a lot of work that was put into it. Drew does a very nice job in leading so many people in that fashion. And he's done it around the state, I think fifty times among districts in the state of Wisconsin. So it'll be very beneficial to all of us, all the information that you've gathered. So thank you. I'd like to reference the liaison, the board member liaison, District Activity Report and ask that this report be entered into the official record. Thank you very much. And I'm seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss, A, Administrator Contract Review, Statute nineteen point eight five one C, and then B, Discuss Superintendent Evaluation Language, Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point eight five one C. Seeking a motion?
So moved.
I believe we need to, we'll call it.
Sarah Brock?
Yes.
John Creacher?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli? Jane Bruch?
Yes.
Corey Sellers?
Yes.
Lance Trala?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes. Thank you very much.